Okay, may I have your attention, please? As was stated on the email that our clerk sent out.
It's arrived.
The meeting will start at 25 after, which is right now. I am going to have Brenda take a roll call. Brenda?
Larson?
Yeah.
Steinbeck?
Novak here.
Greenhouse?
Here.
Fort? McPherson? Sappel? White? Brown?
Here.
Steinbeck?
Here.
Rucker?
Here.
Graham?
Here. Also, we have the director, Mr. Colbert. Is the mayor online, Eddie? Eddie is the mayor online. Mayor Fregman?
Sergeant John Wilson.
Has arrived.
Vince, are you online?
Yes, Mr. President.
Enzo is online, Tom Letson. Chief Merkel and Sergeant Wilson are online. So let's get the meetings started. Who just arrived?
Has left the conference.
Okay, we're going to get the meeting started, the caucus meeting. If you have a question, state your last name, and I will put you down in the order that I get them. Okay, any questions on the draft 0024R? Are there any questions on draft 0024R?
Hi, Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Rucker, you're on.
Thank you. I was wondering about the urgency of having a vote today due to the fact that it's not time for third reading. And I, as we talked about that last time, I'm sorry I didn't hear or don't remember it, but I'm... Why are we having the vote today?
Because three councilmen signed for a special meeting. And from what I understand, I will let Enzo handle this. You are allowed to vote... This thing keeps going off. You are allowed to vote under a special meeting on an ordinance.
Mr. President, is there a timeline or some reason why we have to have, we are having a special meeting?
Well, other than the fact that... Did something happen? No. No, nothing happened, other than the fact that three councilmen signed for a special meeting, and that's why we have it.
Well, maybe they could tell us, one of the three who signed, what the urgency was, rather than wait for a normal third reading.
Okay, Mr. Brown first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was asked to sign for a special call, as we have been having since this pandemic has thrust itself upon us. We have been discussing this current legislation since last fall. We had two very long meetings on it. I believe that the newspaper covered it pretty well for the public to understand. And as far as why are we doing it this way? I don't think it's anything out of the normal. It's a not being done as an emergency. We've had three readings, and we may, we signed for a special call as we normally do when special calls are...
Has arrived.
Are asked for. You know, I mean, it's, it's nothing sinister.
Ms. Rucker?
Frank Tempesto.
Has arrived.
Then we, we spoke, we had a long meeting with Sergeant Wilson, and I thought he explained it in detail. I think that we have had more discussion on this than we normally do on legislation, say, in our building, building type of building within the city. We've been given the parameters of what it will roughly cost. We've been given the location. We've been given the manpower and how it will work. I think that we've been given in pretty explicit detail. I, I'm confident, and I'm, you know, happy with the way that it's been explained to us. And I also think that, from my own person as a council member, that we need to do this. Citizens, I think, will be treated in a fair manner by the police department. And also, this will be a way that we can make some money for the city in a situation where we are in dire need of that, and nothing will change for the citizenry. It would only get better. That's my opinion.
Okay, before Ms. Rucker answers, Mr. Fort, are you online? Mr. Fort? Mr. Fort, are you online? Mr. McPherson? Ms. Sappel?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. White? Okay, we're missing Mr. Fort, Mr. McPherson, Mr. White. Mr. Larson's on. Uh, Ms. Rucker?
Yeah.
Did you hear Mr. Brown's explanation?
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
As you well know, as you well know, we have a special call. It is because the urgency of a timeline, that we need to get something passed as an emergency because of time restraint. That, that doesn't apply here. And the very fact of having this meeting, when we very well could have waited for third reading in its normal matter, is something I really strongly object to. I didn't have any say in three people going down there timing, or if. But I just want to make it a matter of record that there is no need for this third reading. We could have waited. Now, due to the pandemic, Mr. President.
Hold on for one second, Helen. Hold on for one second. There's no card in here. Hold on for one second. There seems to be no card in the recorder. We'll rectify that in a minute. Mr. Fort, are you in yet? Mr. McPherson? Mr. White? Bear with me for a minute, Helen. We're getting a card right now.
All right.
Warm enough? Warm enough?
Okay, Helen, go ahead.
But due to the pandemic, Mr. President, our number one priority has changed. At the beginning of this, we talked about what our number one priority would be. And, and, and I argued that I thought it was body cams, and the police department officers argued that the impound lot was the number one priority. But now the pandemic is the number one priority. Everything else flies down that list. And so what we ought to be talking about is how to keep our, our employees working, and how we're going to deal with our finances. Because this impound lot can't be built and generate any income, Mark Fort.
Has arrived.
It's not going to be anything of any significance. And so for us to rush, rush it through when we don't need to, it's just something I object to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Helen. Does anyone have any questions pertaining to the impound lot?
Mr. President, Al Novak.
Mr. Novak first, and who was that? Mr. Steinbeck second?
Wilson.
Okay, Mr. Novak first, then we get back to Mr. Larson. Go ahead, Mr. Novak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree along the lines with Finance Chairman Brown. You know, this has been discussed and reviewed, and this is a possibility here. You know, you're getting along in the construction season, and this, you know, you have to go through the process of the bidding, and then starting to build this. And as we see, we are surrounded with other entities that are establishing the same thing. And because they realize that there's a very, very large hole being made in the state budgets, the local budgets, and that this is something that can basically going to generate funds that we will sorely need. And in the words of Dick Thomas, we're at that point now where either we got to fish or cut bait. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Mr. Larson?
I, I have to agree with Councilman Brown and Councilman Novak. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Can I just...
Hold on, who, who was that?
Wilson.
All right, Mr. Steinbeck first, and I didn't hear the second one.
Mr. Wilson, Sergeant Wilson.
Okay, Sergeant. Mr. Steinbeck?
Yeah, I, as everybody knows, I'm kind of, you know, new at council here for only being on for a few months. And, and based on Councilman Brown's, um, this has been an amazing, uh, you know, for several, several months going in there, even like last year. And, and, you know, and I think obviously there's some importance to this. And, you know, with, it's not like it just came up, you know, last month or the last time we talked about it. It's been amazing for quite some time. And, and I see that Financial Guy, Vince Flast, has proposed, you know, he's got all the numbers, you know, attached to this. I, I just think it's a, it's a matter of importance, and, and not saying that, uh, Ms. Rucker's issues aren't important, because we all have to be honest of the fact with this pandemic we got going. But we still need to take care, we still need to take care of business also. And I also concur with John Brown and, and the others, and Al Novak in regards to moving forward on this piece of legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Steinbeck. I am going to go to Sergeant Wilson, because he buzzed in, and then the auditor, and then to Cheryl Sappel. Sergeant Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to stress real quick that, uh, being in charge of the Support Division, I've been keeping an eye on our vehicles. Currently, our ESD vehicles, 48% of them are over 100,000 miles, including detective vehicles, which are going on 12 to 14 years old. I know that's not an urgency in maybe some people's eyes, but they're getting to the point to where we're nickel and diming on fixing these vehicles. To run around the clock, in addition to five vehicles that are SRO vehicles, I can't even have them on the road right now. They only serve the purpose for those officers to go to and...
Councilman Ron Way, 7th floor.
Has arrived.
Due to their safety issues. So that's just looking at, at a departmental aspect. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sergeant. Mr. Auditor, Mr. Flash?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Sergeant Wilson for the time and effort he put into this, and the information he provided. With the information that was given, in doing an average, and I sent an email late this afternoon to all of council regarding these numbers. If you take an average of what all of the expenses will be, an average comes out to roughly $62,000. If you take a look at what the anticipated revenue would be on the low end, you're looking at $117,000. The money for the upfront cost for this does not have to come out of the general fund.
Kent McPherson, 5th floor, Councilman.
Has arrived.
We could choose to do some, use some other funds for the upfront costs, such as either city redevelopment or other funding out of the police department that is not in the general fund, with the anticipation of paying that back as the revenue comes in.
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. Councilwoman Sappel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have not heard anyone today discuss the fact that our public, the citizens of Warren who elected us to serve on their behalf, they have not been able to communicate how they feel about the impound lot. And that is my issue here. We were elected not to be self-serving, but to serve our constituents, and that is what I have attempted to do. I placed a post on social media this morning at 10 o'clock, which is in the last five hours. I have received 50 likes, 62 comments, and I also placed 18 phone calls to my specific constituents. And of all of the comments, likes, phone calls, there was only one person who said they didn't have a problem with the impound lot. Everyone else is basically saying what I am saying. What is the rush? We have other pressing issues in the city of Warren that deserve our priority. Number one, keeping us all safe with the coronavirus. And also, the fact that we have 10 murders since January, which is an all-time high record in our city of Warren. Should not we be concerned about these measures as they call to an impound lot at this present time?
Thank you, Ms. Sappel. Anyone else have any questions about the impound lot?
Yes, Mr. President, Helen Rucker again.
Go ahead, Helen.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear Mr. Flash, when he was talking about where the funds were coming from. He said it is not coming from the general fund?
Mr. Flash?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. President, Councilman Rucker, I would suggest that we take the funds from city redevelopment. We have funds in the balance in that fund that could be utilized for the initial cost of this. And then, as the revenue comes in, pay back city redevelopment. There is also some funding available in the police grants and drug forfeiture funds as well.
Thank you, Mr. Flash. Ms. Rucker?
Mr. President, so we're being asked to spend our redevelopment that we were putting aside to generate a business that would create employment in the city. And we're trying to build on that so we had enough money. This doesn't meet that criteria, because it does not generate jobs.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Flash.
Yeah, Councilwoman Rucker, this money will be reimbursed as the revenue comes in. We know that the revenue is going to come in, because we have history that Sergeant provided us from previous toes and from previous years. I have no doubt that we're going to hit the amount of money that we need, and that money should be returned to city redevelopment within the first year of operating.
Thank you, Mr. Flash.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Rucker.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
I guess there's two sides of Warren, or maybe even more factors other than that. The fact that I live in, the people that I live around, this most modern, um, low-income people, and they have just lost their job. They have just lost their job. And the hardship of having a car towed would be devastating to someone like me if I had to go to get to work and I missed the day that my license plate had, or do, or whatever. But we don't want a department out there being overzealous and towing cars to meet some quota so it seems that this project is successful. I understand the need between the revenue, and really, even though I argue about body cam being more of a priority to the impound lot, I said it on the outset. I wasn't against this. I really wasn't against this, but what I, because money was flowing at that time. But what I am against is doing it now when our city is in financial straits. That we're going to spend $80,000 to generate money that we don't know we're going to get. Now, I'm one councilperson who put legislation in for the police officers to tow cars from side yards or dump cars. I watched as that was not enforced. And so I even, I even supported legislation that we hired somebody that could do it. And even supported legislation that would allow John May to own properties and tickets, uh, cars to be towed. The track record of departments cleaning up our neighborhoods of junk cars is just not really that good. Well, that is not, that's something that I just don't have a lot of faith in. But the other thing is, the hardship that this would place on our citizens, it's something that we need to consider now. Look at what it really is to be on a city, on citizens in a city with only 38,000 people and only about 10,000 of them that drive. And the majority of that 10,000 is working poor. Working poor people. Transportation is our number one problem in this city. And so we don't want some officer out there being overzealous to meet a quota to make it seem like we're right in what we want today. And we don't have to do it today. We could ease this in gradually, and that revenue still can be generated next year or later this year, whenever. But at this time, whatever money that we have, we need to keep our employees working. Because if you can transfer $80,000 from our, um, from that fund, you can keep somebody working. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, this is Director, can I chime in?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I'm not sure where to start, but we'll start with the idea that city redevelopment money can be used to, um, to fund salaries. Mr. Flash, are we allowed to use city redevelopment money to fund salaries? No. Thank you. Second of all, Mr. Sergeant Wilson, Chief Merkel, have we ever once discussed the idea of having a quota for the impound lot?
We would discuss it publicly, Mr. Director.
All right, so to move on.
I would not be discussing it. I'll play the hand.
The answer to that is no. We have never, and nor would we ever. I'll ask you to say to another question. Right now, as Ms. Rucker had alluded to, what it would be the difference? We didn't have an impound lot. Cars still do get towed, correct?
Correct. Correct.
So therefore, us having an impound lot in the city have no negative bearing on our citizens, one way or the other?
Well then, well then, how do you feel, Mr. Director? How do you feel with number of cars that we're already towing? Then why do we need to build an impound lot now to buy a car?
Sergeant Wilson?
We already, we already did it on budget.
Sergeant Wilson, how many, how many, could you name off the top of your head the number of police departments within the valley that operate, or number of municipalities within the valley that operate their own tow yards as we speak?
Um, five surrounding communities, yes.
Can you, can you list some of those for council?
It'd be Gerard, Howland, Liberty, Niles, Wethersfield.
Has arrived.
Graceville? So this isn't something that's trend-setting. This is something that is, that is already a regular practice within our own, within our own jurisdiction, if you will.
Director, I understand that. I understand that. But if you ask Officer Wilson, how many are building impound lots during the time of a pandemic when they may be faced with layoffs? The answer would be a little different.
Ms. Rucker, just as the auditor had stated, if this were to be paid for out of, out of city redevelopment funds that would be reimbursed back into the fund as this, as this generates revenue, we cannot pay salaries with city redevelopment money?
You know why we can't? Because it's a counteristic action that that, that money was earmarked for creating new businesses that would create jobs. It would take a counteristic action to change that. As President, no, you can't. And, so you're not asking that. You're not asking us anything until the last minute.
Yes, you should not, this is, this is, that's not the comparison, Ms. Rucker. There's nothing that I can do to save somebody's job utilizing city redevelopment.
I'm going to counsel first, sir.
Okay, uh, do we have any more questions pertaining to the impound lot?
Yes, Councilman White?
Yes, Councilman White.
The impound lot. Uh, I have a question as far as doing. I tried to call Chief Merkel and to get in touch with, uh, Sergeant Wilson. I just got a few questions I wanted to ask, but no one got back and stuck with me. But this is my question. Because the impound lot is going to be built. But again, too, the bodies that people that are going to, uh, going back to what Ms. Rucker, uh, Councilwoman Rucker was talking about, as far as court work, but again, then do you have to deal with courts? They're going to be, uh, here and there. But these people are going to be, they're going to be calling for jobs, silent, they're going back to work and everything else. How are they going to get the money to pay for these areas? Uh, fines and all that they're going to be having, especially current at the impound lot, when their court dates could go on for a week, maybe two weeks or whatever, accumulating money, and then think that seems like another way of making money, taking money out of people's pockets? Can you answer that? And why can't we have also a traffic court or magistrate that we do have downtown that could handle a traffic court? But again, nobody's looking at these situations.
Uh, let's talk about the impound lot, Councilman. Mr. Brown, you want to handle that last question, Mr. Mr. Whitehead?
Right, right.
I believe his question was, uh, the people don't have the money to pay... I believe his question was, uh, the people don't have the money to pay for impound lots when their cars are towed. Is that what you said, Councilman?
No, uh, what I'm saying is this is, um, the people want this to make money. I understand that. Nobody's uh saying that it's not. It's there to make money, but in the process, too, to start gouging people as far as court hearings and everything else, doing with, I go, I gotta win on my hearing. It's going to be uh next week. Council is supposed to be kind of friendly too toward its constituents as far as doing. If you have a hearing, you pay your towing fee. You turn it down there, you uh you have a court hearing. Now, once you pay your toll fee and your uh administration, what is wrong with freezing until your court hearing? Then after your hearing, if you don't show up, just add that on to it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anyone else have anything pertaining to the impound lot? Because we're going to start the regular meeting in about four minutes.
No one can answer that?
Why? Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. McPherson. Kenny, you have about, we're going to start at four o'clock, so make it quick, please.
Well, so why don't I just do it at four o'clock? I've got way more than four minutes. We'll start the meeting and I'll bring it up there. I mean, I uh I I got a financial statement on revenue uh from the auditor. I don't have expenses on there. Right, what are our costs uh going, you know, obviously that there were that's revenue? Were there any uh uh costs associated with this? And then going forward, we don't know what the net's going to be. But now we know what we did in the past revenue wise, and that's pretty much net because that's uh the existing folks doing it. We've we've never gotten a copy of the existing laws that exist now and in arrangements we have now, the details. I mean, these are questions uh uh Councilman Fourth Supreme, I mean, uh, White's bringing up in that he doesn't uh, you know, we can't point to the law, the existing law, and where we would make amendments, like to have an amendment to uh uh say there can't be quotas. And uh um so rather than uh uh, you know, have that be a a a open issue, like, do we talk about quotas? Do we say we're never going to do it? Why don't council just take action right now and culcate into the law, uh, quotas altogether? And when I go through this and I look at uh uh, you know, the money we're going to expend today and that somehow we're going to pay it back, the question becomes is, uh, if we spend that money today, in between now and when that money quote gets paid back, we're in a uh, you know, checking accounts out of money and we're laying off people, what are you going to tell folks? Uh, hey, uh, we we're going to hire you back in another three months once we get some more rev off this. Uh, I I think that it's uh uh at this point, when you're hunkering down, I agree with uh uh Councilman Rucker, that uh you don't go out uh spending money uh uh on on activities like this when you're battening down the hatches. You know, as a businessman, as somebody who owns companies and runs companies, I could tell you right now, in my companies, uh, we're not pocketed. All our expansion is shut down. And the personal company I own, uh, family company and the multinational corporation I work for on a daily basis, everything, all all our employee hires, all our, all of our projects got shut down. We're we're locked in not doing stuff like this, even though there's tremendous amount of revenue potential in the projects we're doing, they all got shut down. And I think that uh for us to behave differently in these circumstances is irresponsible and is not uh in in line with what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, so there's a number of topics I'd like to talk about, Mr. President. I I'm sorry, I've already gone over the four minutes right at it. Uh, but uh uh, you know, as I go through this, I look at it and I say, um, I got a phone call today from.
Kenny, Kenny, I'm going to have to cut you off. Kenny, I'm going to have to cut you off. If you have additional things to say, you could say during the meeting because it's four o'clock and we have to start running. Okay?
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, would you take roll call for the special meeting?
Larson.
Present.
Novak. Greyhouse.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
McPherson. Sappel.
Here. Sappel is here.
Brown.
Here.
Steinbeck.
Here.
Rucker. And Graham.
Here. Madam Clerk, would you redraft zero zero two four R, please?
Draft zero zero two four R. An ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and the director of Public Services and Safety for and on behalf of the City of Warren, Ohio, to authorize the establishment and location of a city-owned police impound lot, provide for the funding of the construction and purchase of equipment, and advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the construction of a city-owned police impound lot for the storage of vehicles impounded by the Warren City Police Department located in the City of Warren, Ohio, in the Phantom Emergency.
Mr. Novak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to pass draft zero zero two four R as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass draft zero zero two four R. Discussion. Mr. Mr. McPherson, I believe you had the floor when we stopped the uh caucus meeting.
Yes, Mr. President. I've got a number of points. Um, as I was uh saying, uh, I got a phone call from uh one of my constituents. Uh, he's a former policeman detective, uh, lives in my ward and uh he called me to say that uh on the topic that uh uh Ms. Rucker referred to, uh, and the one I I I frequently say about policing for profit and this uh moral hazard that's created and and that uh, you know, the same folks that are getting revenue from it or enforcing the law, there's uh an issue with that. And he specifically told me as an officer and a former officer and a patrolman and somebody seen pretty much all side of it as working with the court system after his retirement, that uh uh that this is uh a concern for him and that he said that, you know, we need to, you know, carefully look at that and and that we need to consider that. And so this is uh one of our law enforcement folks coming to me and reaffirming that same things that some of my other uh council folks have referred to. And I I so I dap that concern and and I I would want to have a uh an amendment to talk about a quotas to the, if not this law, the other law that we haven't seen yet. And and so we wanted to have a chance to see these laws and then like this one got sprang upon us on the twenty seventh of April. Uh, it's been revised at some point and in a very unusual and short amount of time, Mr. President, this uh uh has been in in somewhat of a way to, you know, circumvent the uh emergency legislation process, right? You know, the Ohio legislature put in place the notion of uh three readings to cause a uh time of deliberation and and to not allow everything to be in in readings. And and so I think the statute's got a purpose there. And and in this case, you know, now we have two pieces of legislation. We can't see the other legis piece of legislation that kind of impacts this because, you know, when you do it in business and you do investments and you look at risk versus reward, one of the things you look at is what's my cost, right? So we have that. It's somewhere between uh, you know, forty and eighty. And given, you know, my little bit of experience here on council, I've seen that, you know, there's sometimes uh things don't come in as what they say it will be. And so if you think it's forty to eighty, sometimes it's fifty percent more, like, you know, maybe uh a phase one CIP plan for the uh sanitation department, the the water pollution control, which came in fifty percent over. So provided that, we're we're shelling out money, a significant amount of money, and uh uh and we don't know our ROI, our return on investment. We have an idea of our revenue based on the model we have currently. Uh, and 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 quite frankly, I don't know that that's our actual revenue. That's 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 a revenue in the sense of uh, you know, fund-based accounting and those are funds that got revenue, but they have offsetting uh expenses, right? You know, that's what return on investment. So even for these numbers, we had an officer associated with this and the salary of the officer to administer the program where a third-party entity does the majority of the work for us and and provides all the service, we have these numbers coming in, which are, you know, the cost basis on is probably substantially different than uh the cost basis of this new program where the responsibility is on us for everything, right? Managing the lot, uh, securing the cars, uh, doing all the little details that the current folks are doing. And we've yet to see a operational cost analysis and an operational kind of uh like what's this going to run us, you know? So we know our and and thanks to the auditor for getting us this uh uh data today, uh I appreciate that. Um, uh, I was able to get a chance to look through this and and get a sense of where the numbers are revenue-wise, which are are pretty good. You know, right now, uh, if if we have, you know, the Corona debacle going on, we may be on pace for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars worth of uh uh annual revenue from this program that we currently run using a third-party company. But we don't know is when we get a uh, we start doing all this ourselves, we know from this PowerPoint provided by Officer Wilson that uh some of the footnotes indicate they have three officers involved. Uh, we don't know uh what the title, the pay, the cost, the expense of the three officers that are going to be assigned to this program are. And, you know, uh, and if these are senior officers, uh, it could be well in excess of the current revenue that we're currently generating. And so we might be taking a program that is making us uh a uh benefit to the general fund and we may be uh uh with no knowledge whatsoever upfront, um, because we haven't seen the operational side and we don't know the operational cost and the way that is because we said we have to build it first. But to build it first has this problem. If we build it and it's a bogus idea and the numbers don't work, we've already paid the money to build it. And so this is a cart in front of the horse kind of mechanism and and it just doesn't make sense. And so that's why I want to do is propose an amendment uh that says uh and modifies the existing uh legislation to uh strike the the issue in of the contract, the entering to the contract, the uh automate automatically entering into the contract and section two entirely where we give the authority to the uh law director and the auditor to uh uh disperse the funds for this and that when the bid's done and we know the bid, to come back to council. And uh and at that time, my understanding is, from what I understand, this is six, three, you know, three to six months from now once we get through that process, uh, that uh now we have a better idea of what our cash flow hits going to be, what are, you know, our how constraint we're going to be and uh and then what, you know, where we're at on where we're going to be looking off. And it gives us as council now the chance to go ahead and say, okay, maybe this is not something we should be doing. Maybe it just should uh go off on for a while longer before we make this expenditure.
Mr. President, Mayor Frank.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I have the floor now.
Hold on, Mayor, one second.
I thought you were done.
No, I I'm not done. When I've done, I usually say, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, well, I'm good.
If I have a question for you, I'll ask you, Mayor.
All right, hey, let's just stay on subject.
No, I I'm going to stay on the subject. I'm not interrupted again. Mr. President, I'm a councilman, I have the floor.
Uh, Mr. Mr. McPherson, don't don't yell. Mayor Franklin, wait till the councilman's through, please, then I'll get right to you.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me get back to my notes. And uh what I was talking about was this amendment idea and and that I think a lot of council people, even the folks that are, you know, uh, committed to voting yes on, have this same kind of uh concern as as do a vast majority of the people I've talked to. A overwhelming majority are are concerned that at this juncture, at this time, in this environment, for us to spend this kind of money, Mr. President, is 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 not a fiduciary wise action. This is uh uh, you know, a fancy word for it is uh profligate. It's a profligate is uh recklessly extravagant and a wasteful use of resources. And I think that comes as part of a Latin word called profligare, which means to ruin or become destillate. And and I think that uh uh we need to consider that as, you know, this time when, on the twenty seventh, April twenty seventh, we introduced uh this ordinance number twenty four. Uh, at that time, we did ordinance number twenty five. And may I remind my fellow councilmen that ordinance number twenty five uh was to take all the money for capex and express and discretionary spending and move it off into a special account that the uh auditor had set up as to start battening down the hatches and try to get our ducks in an order. And uh and I applaud the auditor for that and his work and 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 the leadership to take us in that direction. Uh, the problem I have is is that at that same time, we introduced a piece of legislation, which uh, you know, and I thought, hey, this is good, we can get this, we're talking and we push this through, we get some time on it, but here we are, you know, three weeks later, they're already addressing it, to to put it into law and go spend that money. In the meantime, I uh I I I'm not getting streets paid. In the meantime, uh, we're probably not going to be able to mow lawns with summers and and keep up on that program. And and we have uh hopefully we'll be able to take some of the uh the money we get from those seven hundred K in the uh uh COVID HUD money and use that for the lawn program. I I'm hoping we're able to do that. Um, but I I think a uh uh this this is a major concern for me as a council person.
Okay, Mr. McPherson. Uh, let me, let me, let me ask you, your amendment is what?
Well, I I I'll do my proposal amendment and we'll go from there. I uh I I'll propose a amendment to strike from paragraph one, paragraph uh section one, labeled section one on the second page, strike the words and enter into a contracts.
So that's that is your amendment?
And also replace section two entirely with the sentence, return to council for approval of the contract before proceeding to enter into the contracts.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And I would be willing to do that on an emergency basis. I would admit to my fellow councilmen that when this comes back and uh uh at times of the essence at that point, because somebody gives us a, you know, a thirty day, that I, you know, I understand that, you know, we have time of the essence. So the amendment I have is uh strike from paragraph uh labeled section one, the parenthetical uh phrase and enter into contracts. Replace entirely section two with return to council for approval of the contract before proceeding to enter into the uh contracts.
Okay, we have here.
Mr. President.
Yes, uh, the law director, then Mayor, I'll get to you real quick here.
Mr. President, thank you. Uh, before, and I know the normal protocol would be to request a second on the councilman's motion, however, I would just I'd.
I'll second that.
I'd be remiss if I didn't. if I didn't point out the legalities of the proposed amendments, I should say the illegality of it. Specifically, Revised Code, Section 731.05 articulates the powers of the legislative authority, which is this body for the city of Warren. The amendments being proposed by Councilman McPherson would be in violation of that section of the Ohio Revised Code in as far or inasmuch as the legislative body would be attempting to usurp administrative functions not appropriately granted to it by Ohio law. So I would, according with Mr. President, as this body's attorney, as well as the city's attorney, it is incumbent upon me to point out the potential illegality of such action, the actual illegality of such action, prior to it being called for a second, much less a vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Law Director. Mayor Franklin, you're on.
President, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, Councilman McPherson, I just wanted to make a point regarding just what the councilman said. This legislation gives us the authority to go out for bid, correct?
Yes.
And it does say enter into contract. I don't anticipate us entering to a contract before we share with council what those numbers are once those bids come in. So we have some of that built into our system. As soon as we, we'll know the cost soon as the bids come in for the project.
So Mayor, you're saying?
I know, this is by no means, this is by no means a go-ahead with the project. It let us get more information in terms of the cost. And that way, we can all do a better cost-benefit analysis. And having said that, I'd like to refer back to Officer Wilson, who's put together a document. And I'd like to remind council, our first meeting, so the notion that we're fast-tracking this is misleading at best. The first meeting we had on this, where May's, the owner of May's address council, was back in January. So this is, it's extremely misleading to say that we're fast-tracking this.
Okay, before I get to this?
But I would like to just offer that point that after we get that information, we will definitely go back, come back to council and share with them what that, what the bid revealed in terms of what the cost of creating a lot. And I'd like to also, we're not buying land for this project. We own the land that we're contemplating.
Mayor Franklin, thank you, Mayor Franklin. So everybody, here's?
I'd like to speak on the motion.
Oh, geez. Hold on for one second. Hold on for one second. Okay, so what Mayor Franklin is saying, basically, once the bids come in, he's going to bring it back to council so we can review it. Is that what you're saying, Mayor Franklin?
Absolutely, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Franklin. Okay, Ms. Rucker.
Mr. President, yes. I'd just like to say one thing before we vote on the motion, or if we're going to vote on the motion, that in thinking about this, when we give the mayor or the administration the authority to go out for bid or to enter into contracts, we're doing it by the rules of the Ohio Revised Code. And so you need to mark this down, because I don't agree with you often. But...
Who don't you agree with often?
I don't stand on, I don't stand on the idea of circumventing the administrative authority, knowing more than I stand on the issue of the administration circumventing on councils.
Well, I stand on Ohio law, so.
And Ohio Revised Code, that we, this language is correct in that we're actually giving them the authority to go ahead on and enter into contracts. I think we have to stand on that.
And Helen, as the mayor just said, he's going to get back with council, which is over and above what they really have to do. He's going to get back with council as soon as the bids come in. Mr. McPherson, is that satisfactory?
Mr. President? Thank you, Mr. ... Helen, do you still want to say something? Do you still have the floor?
No, she's, no, she's not.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, sorry, I muted myself a second time. I thought I was unmuted. I was trying to stay unmuted, not to interrupt. Yes, Mr. President, it goes to that, that I think then that if we don't do section two, any contract, so we're indicating that 3105, once we give section one the authority to go do this, basically, we're going through and going forward, there is no real review. There is, at that point, passing this says that they go forward and don't have to, the mayor doesn't have to go back to council. Doesn't, we don't have any policy for the mayor coming back to council or anybody in the administration telling us what contracts they let out, what the contracts were let out for. I can tell you that in the time I've been here, I've never been notified when we had a, you know, regular reading, what contracts or bids came in and what's going out the door in terms of what we authorized and what was the final number. So, yeah, I guess in that regard, you know, we're looking at, we have a proposed amount, it'll go out. That's section one and section two's boilerplate language, apparently, that's, you know, in line with Ohio Revised Code. I guess that if we didn't have section two in this and that paragraph, that, that don't have the authority to enter into the contract. And that's what we're relinquishing here. They have the authority to go out for bid. What changed in section two is we're saying, in section one in that paragraph, we say "and" enter into contracts, which is what 3501 says. Once we give them that power, we can't take any further action. What my amendment says is, we're not giving you that power. We're giving you the power to go out for bid, to get a bid, but not execute the bid. And I think that this is not necessarily, you know, it's to get a final price. We don't know the final price, and that the bid process takes a considerable amount of time, from what I understand, which is, you know, one of the arguments I heard today. It's in the role now, because every month that goes by.
Mr. McPherson, once we give them the right, according to the Ohio Revised Code, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Law Director, they can go out, get bids, and enter into a contract. In this specific case with the impound lot, the mayor has just said, once the bids come in, they're going to bring it back to council so we can review it. So he's telling us he's going to go over and above the Ohio Revised Code.
We just did that with Packer, excuse me, Mr. President, but that's exactly what we did with Packer Music Hall.
Yes.
And the golf course.
Yes. Okay, I believe Mr. White had his, are you done, Kenny? Mr. White, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have, I just have some problems here dealing with this. Number one is, I'm looking at, you know, when you're saying fast-track, that's what I'm saying to one of them. Probably one of them said fast-to-fast. I'm looking at April 27th, August, September 12th, it's May. We haven't really discussed anything. Yeah, you guys keep on smacking, you idiots. But we haven't keep on, we are doing it in a regular meeting, face-to-face. I'll be right back.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, Councilwoman Sappel, one butter tower. Let me go and finish there. It's that, we're talking about 20,000, 200,000, 300,000 per year. That's the high side. But also too, you're not looking at all the things that need to go with this year. And if you want to build all in one form of legislation, I wouldn't have a problem voting for it. But right now, as it is, I'm sorry, the fact is that, you're not having an impound lot, okay. Council don't go for what you want after the impound lot is built. Again, I stated in the paper, it's going to look like idiots. Also, the fact is that, I don't know if this year is right or not as far as when I've been on Mexico.
Well, first of all, Councilman, I read that in the paper. That was, Councilman, I read that in a paper, and that's a very reckless term to use. Unethical, if you look up the definition of unethical. You'll see what I'm talking about. Well, no, no, he brought up the unethical part. Forget the point of order. He brought it up. I didn't. He's got the floor. He still has the floor.
Now, let me finish when I'm still here. You guys go turn around, too, if you're going to be dealing with us going to have to car show to whatever's in the city. And I don't even want to go in about a quarter. That's all right. Don't worry about me. I both know anyway. That's it.
Ms. Sappel, Ms. Sappel, I got you. Go ahead.
First of all, I would appreciate it, first of all, I would appreciate it if everyone would put their phones on mute. You're being very disrespectful. We can hear all the chatter in the background and all of the unnecessary noise, and I so appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate that.
I would like to read a post that I placed on social media five hours ago, and it said, Warren City residents, I was informed yesterday that I must vote today whether or not the Warren City Police Department should build an impound lot across the street from the police station on South Street. I feel the vote is being brushed at a time when our city should be concentrating on the coronavirus and the ten murders in our city for the year 2020. There should have been more input from Warren residents. I would like to know what you think. Well, Colleen, I received 125 responses in the last five hours, and 124 of those responses said, no, they do not want an impound lot built right now. They feel that the timing is wrong and that they should have been afforded the opportunity to speak their minds and for us to listen to what they had to say. So the message we are sending to our residents is that we don't care what they think, that we are being self-serving, and we only care about what we think. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Sappel.
President Helen Rucker.
Yes, Ms. Rucker.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my final comment about this. And I just want to start by asking the director, should we get to the point where we're laying off across the board, which is how we lay off, and of course, layoffs? Just how many cars, have you factored in how many cars will be available for police use after a layoff? And how many ranking officers you will have that will be manning an impound lot? That's my first point. My second point is what I started this meeting about. It's the request for the special call. This is not, this is not time for the third reading. Three councilmen went down there without any timeline or any justification that we had to be in this meeting today, that we couldn't wait for a regular third meeting. And normally, when we do that, we're pressed by a timeline. I think the call was unjustly made. It shouldn't have happened, and I take offense to that. But for all of you sitting up there on the podium, if you listen carefully, you heard from Kim McPherson, Sheryl Sappel, Ron White, and myself, that we're not opposed to the impound lot. What we are opposed to is that you're doing it in a rush manner, and you're doing it during the time of a crisis. Not only a pandemic crisis, but a financial crisis. We don't know where we're going to be. We don't know how our money's going to be, should be used. We just don't have any questions. Now, at the last meeting, we requested information from the department and the director, and we just received that information. And you could talk about, we brought this up in January, but in January, you did not have a consensus of council on whether we should even do it or not. But you went ahead, pushed through first reading, so we had first reading. Second reading came, pushed through that, and here we are, a week later, it's the third reading. It's not proper, and we do have time to wait. It is not our number-one priority. The pandemic is, and the potential layoffs of our employees are our number-one priority. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Sappel. Mr. Director?
Ms. Rucker.
Ms. Rucker, what did I say?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Director, you're on.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, Mayor Franklin?
Yes, Mayor.
I just like to request something that Councilwoman Sappel wrote on regarding her post that she was being forced to vote on whether we should build an impound lot. I'd like to disinform the public that that's not what council's being asked to vote on. It's to start the process of us seeing how much it would cost. So this is really preliminary. This is so we can get information back to you on how much it would cost. But we're not voting on whether we're going to build an impound. Let's clear that up with the public, right? This is to start the process of receiving proposals for how much it would cost. So we can bring that information back to council and make an informed decision based on cost. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. President?
Mr. Brown, who is this?
Steinbeck.
Oh, Mr. Steinbeck.
I, and there's been a lot of good comments, and some of them I certainly don't agree with, trying to rewrite this piece of legislation. And everybody's got their own take on this piece of legislation. I think we beat this thing up enough here. The mayor's citizens are back, he's going to give some numbers. So let's let him do that and bring it back to us, and then we'll deal with this at the next meeting we have. We'll just keep beating this thing up here. We're not going nowhere with it.
Thank you, Mr. Steinbeck. Mr. Brown had his, Mr. Brown had his hat on first, then Councilman Sappel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the last year, we've had several meetings on this legislation and subsequently, many other meetings on this impound lot. They were advertised in the Tribune. People did have an opportunity to come and speak on those. We have been told the when, the where, and the how on the impound lot in more detail than most legislation that comes before us. In my time on council, we purchased or built the Gibson Building. We put out engineering plans for a maintenance building for Water Department. We built a water sale facility at Water Department. We've given authority to the administration to enter into a contract for management of Avalon Golf Course, to enter into a contract for management of the Packer Music Hall. And we did not try to micromanage those contracts. micromanage those contracts in the manner that we are here. It just seems to me that we're holding the police department to a different standard, and a different standard than we do any other departments, and I think that is wrong. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Councilwoman Sappel, please.
Ms. Sappel, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am reading the ordinance as it was written when it states, quote, "an ordinance for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and the director of public services safety to," and I, and I am ad-libbing, well, not ad-libbing, but I'm skipping some words, but I'm not deleting any words per se. It says, "to authorize the establishment and location of a city-owned police impound lot," and it says, "for the funding of the construction of the impound lot." So we are voting on an impound lot.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Sappel, I, I believe the mayor said it twice.
Mr. President McPherson.
Uh, Mayor Franklin, go ahead.
Yeah, once again, it's the first part of this process is to, to, to receive bids so that we can, and I promise, so that we can go back, come back and give you some, some hard numbers on what the costs are. This is not to, to build the impound lot. This is the first part of the process. The language is standard in all of our contracts. We've never once entered into a contract without counsel, without authorization. So, so we need, what I've said that I would do, and if you don't trust me, I can't do anything about that, but what I've said I would do is come back to council once we receive those bids and let you know what those numbers are, and we can go from there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President. Let's vote.
Uh, ho, hold on. I, I believe that Mr. Novak was trying to chime in first. Go ahead, Mr. Novak.
And Mr. McPherson, too.
I got you. I got you, Kenny.
I think it's time to call the vote. Order, order.
Need a second. There's a motion under order.
Yeah, I've got, called a vote on my motion.
I, I have a...
My amendment?
I have a, uh, hold on for a second. I have a call for the question vote and a second. That ends all debate.
Look, on, on my motion, then, we're going to vote on the motion.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. McPherson. We have a motion for calling for the question and a second. We have to vote on that. If it goes down, then it comes back to you. Madam Clerk?
Larson.
Yes.
Novak.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Grayhough?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Sappel?
No.
White?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Steinbeck?
Yes.
Rucker?
No.
Six yes, four no.
The vote is six yes, four no. Draft number 0024R has passed.
No, no, no.
No, Mr. President.
No, no, excuse me, excuse me. Whoa, whoa, stop. Kenny, just relax, all right? That was the call for the question to end debate. Now we are voting on the proposed legislation. Madam Clerk?
Larson?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Grayhough?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
McPherson?
I find it disingenuous that we said we're going to debate and talk about this, but we're not, right?
Point of order, Mr. McPherson.
Was it rushed?
Yes or no?
We've been talking about it since I...
Oh, hold on. We don't need a debate. Yes or no, Mr. McPherson?
You don't like working, then you get another job, but that's what we're...
Mr. McPherson?
And we haven't...
Yes or no?
You're telling me about work, McPherson.
All right, all right, listen, listen.
I work harder than you, not at losing steelworkers' jobs. Like, I'm looking right now, and I'm doing my vote, so I'm trying to...
Would you guys stop? Hey!
We don't have any time left to discuss this. I never even got a chance to, uh, hear my motion voted on.
Kenny?
Even though borders...
Yes or no?
No.
Sappel?
124 Warren residents say no. White?
Out of order.
White?
No. No.
Brown?
Yes.
Steinbeck?
Yes.
Rucker?
No.
Six yes, four no.
Draft 0024R has passed.
Mr. President, I have a, uh...
I have a motion to...
...section about if it's an emergency, it's not valid and needs to be removed.
I have a motion to adjourn with a second.
There's the emergency section of the law. It's not valid and it's not an emergency anymore.
Yeah, and Mr. McPherson, you're totally out of order here. All those in favor of adjournment, I'm going to have the clerk go through. The roll call.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Grayhough?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
McPherson?
No.
Sappel?
No.
White?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Steinbeck?
Yes.
Rucker?
No.
Six yes, four no.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
What a council we have.